All right, we'll call the November 14th meeting. I would like to announce to the people, Ryan, for now, silence to follow by the pledge of belief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, go.
Here, Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri, here. Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Braker.
If you're asking for me, I'm here.
Mayor Law.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the November fourteenth, regular meeting. August. Okay.
We get the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, I didn't tell you that.
You don't have to do it on it?
No, not tonight. Um, public comment. Do you have any public comments, Harry?
We do have one. Um, I think two. Casey, last round one, um, just got in and we will go on it next meeting, December fifth, but wanted to bring that to your attention. Yeah, I'm working with two students from Central Mountain for their senior project, which will be a leave art, take art box, which is similar to the little libraries that we have downtown. Um, and right now we are looking at a spot in Valen Alley that would be able to house the little library as well as this take art, leave art. So their idea is to bring just like different art projects and people can bring little pieces of art and it might even be some art supplies as well. So they can kind of take art, leave art, take art.
Any other comments?
There is one comment where Franko is here. Um, he'd like to address that.
Good evening. As you already know my name, Mr. Mayor, Councilperson. Uh, tonight coming for you, uh, I know it's all a bunch of season for a bunch of us. Um, it's been a hard year for most. Um, that's, that's why I'm here tonight. It's that time here where we start doing membership drives and fundraising, um, for our association. I just want to give you just a brief report of, uh, the activities you allow us to do in your community, such as assigning us to the city. Uh, calendar year from eleven twenty to eleven twenty of this year, we've had a twenty seven hundred and fifty alarms. We run about four hundred transfers out of the Lock Haven Hospital with residents who reside within the city limits. All right. Um, about forty percent, forty-eight percent of that nine sixteen hundred and ninety-six calls are nine one one requests. Now, they are ALS, Advanced Life Support Request, and Basic Life Support Request. The reason for we come in here tonight, as most of yous, um, anybody that this knows that fuel costs are just out of control. I've been with the department forty plus years and I've never seen numbers like that, Steve, in the past year. Our target fuel consumption for this year is estimated forty-two thousand dollars for diesel fuel. Forty-two thousand dollars. Never have seen those kind of numbers. I just want to relate that sixty-one point six percent of that fuel cost is generated from Lock Haven EMS taking calls in the city limits. Rough numbers, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year cost us to operate just fuel alone in the city limits. So I'm here tonight to please ask if you would consider any type of donation towards our fuel bills. We would greatly appreciate it. And if there's any questions I can ask or answer of any of your council members.
You have questions for Jordan, anyone?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I mean, Jordan, I talked very briefly one time about this, him asking if he could come and make the request. And I certainly said he could. I know he's made the request to other municipalities as well. And giving them the data for their municipality. Obviously, everybody knows that, you know, the EMS does an absolutely fantastic job. They're a well-run organization. And while our budget is certainly tight, I certainly think we should really take a hard look at a fairly substantial donation um, to them because the bulk of the work that they do is right here in the city. So, um, I don't know if it's appropriate for, for anybody to make a motion of an amount for donation, or if we would take that back to Greg.
I think what we should do is make a vote. And have anything put in there that are more discussable, you know, into the list of, of donations that we currently do. Yeah, because it should require that figure, sure. Anyone disagree with that?
No, I think that's the way to handle it. Let's put it right in with the, with the library and Historical Society and all those different. We had a handful of other local charitable organizations. Would you, um, would you send an email or something with your numbers and the percentages again? I'm sorry that I didn't write them down if you were saying percentage of calls that are the city block haven.
Sixty-one point six.
Okay.
Which equates to, uh, sixteen hundred and ninety-six calls, four hundred of those, four hundred of those also being transfers at a Lock Haven Hospital, but has a city Lock Haven at it.
Right.
After, we're, we run our numbers based on MCD codes, so it'll actually give me the municipalities. Like, we did the same thing for Woodward, Mike, or Township, Castanha, and most of the municipalities that we provide service to.
So the sixteen ninety-six includes four hundred transfers from the hospital?
That is correct.
All right, great.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Any other comments, brothers, presidents? Okay. Unfinished business, five A, consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen.
This is the stormwater management ordinance, which is from water credit policy manual. Um, second reading, it has not changed since the first reading. And if enacted today, will go into effect for the second quarter. Um, I can be able to kind of set it up in the water.
What was your counsel?
Move the second reading.
We have a motion. I'd like to make the second, Richard. Richard, we have a motion. Would you like to make the second?
Um, certainly.
Right. Motion for a second, any further discussion, questions or comments?
Yeah, I had one, uh, community member that contacted me, uh, was concerned about, uh, when they, when they saw the information, we saw ambition originally, that we had gone with such a high percentage. When it were municipalities with lower amounts, but my comment really was that, uh, we wanted to get this off the ground and running quicker. And frankly, uh, I don't know what your water bill bills and sewer bills are for the rest of you, but for mine, it's not going to make that big of a difference in the calendar. So that was the section I had. So I, I'm certainly supportive of the motions.
Any other comments? Offer the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Member Braker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Any other unfinished business? Six A, new business approval, explicit for bids for fuel purchases, point, point three.
This is the annual request from the Director of Public Works to solicit for bids for a lot of pressures of fuel.
Which count. Move, solicit for bids. Motion for floor and second. Any question or comments?
Questions for G. Do you take any, are fuel prices, do you get your fuel from up at us at our?
Um, councilman, we used to, when it was over the city wire in here, um, the reason we stopped, we initially helped purchase the electronic computer system for that, but we were one of few that got charged six percent usage tax. And when you do that, it puts it up more than I pay under contract. I do the same thing you're doing. Uh, we, we put it out to bid and have all the legal taxes, um, removed that we can. So we're, we're, we're in the same, same ballpark or city. We, we put it out to bid, but you, you pretty much pay tank price per time of purchase.
Yeah, I thought buying both like that, because you've got a discount from the pump price, and I didn't know you were paying six percent.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, though? Offer the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin. Member Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Braker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Six B, consideration, the closure of Letter Alley and Belle Point Avenue, Stone Alley, the annual citizens' Christmas tree sale.
So this is the annual closure for, as Mary said, the Christmas tree sale would start November twenty-sixth and end of December twenty-eighth.
Do I have a motion? Remove the question. Second. Motion for a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly. Yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Six C, notice the amount of the twenty twenty-two pilot payment.
This is the notice to City Council that the, uh, annual payment for the twenty twenty-two pilot program from Clinton County Housing Authority, it's twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents. And this is an increase of two thousand dollars, two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Question, driving on it? Hey, do we have any other new business?
I have none.
Okay. Done a public hearing on the twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Purpose of this hearing is to report to the public an opportunity comment to make observations on the recommended budget as reflected in ordinances number twenty-two dash fourteen and twenty-two dash fifteen. Comments from agencies and organizations in the city. Okay, the UCC code enforcement. That's you. You're up.
I'm up. Okay. I am not going to read from my full accomplishments, you know, and I have it in front of you, so I don't want to be redundant. I know it's Steve's birthday and he's anxious, but.
Yeah.
My Beijing, um, some of, just to touch on a couple of things that were, um, I think big in the accomplishment was adopting the two thousand and eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. Um, that was a huge undertaking during the COVID era, um, where painstakingly renewed every part of the two thousand and eighteen International Property Maintenance Code, um, in comparison to what we currently had adopted, which was two thousand and three Property Maintenance Code. Obviously, with fifteen years in between, there were vast differences between the two codes, but, um, implementing something that's more comprehensive and more up to date has part of proven to be beneficial. Um, this year alone, we utilized that newly adopted property maintenance code to address three problem properties in the past that we really hadn't had anything with much teeth, uh, go after compliance, but now that we have a two thousand and eighteen Property Maintenance Code in place, I was able to issue no violations and we had achieved compliance with all three of those. Um, next year's objectives, we're hoping to, I'm hoping to work in collaboration with Abby and Bert Parkin with reviewing and then updating the zoning ordinance as well as the land development subdivision ordinance. Um, land development subdivision ordinance hasn't been updated in my tenure here, which is twenty-six years now. So there are a lot of things that I think, uh, can be addressed there that will help to bring more development into the city. Um, obviously, we want to hire the property maintenance inspector that go a long way to handle the newly implemented vacant property registry, um, as well as handling other, other parts of the property maintenance code and properties that we have violations currently. Um, the numbers in my rent or in my budget haven't changed significantly. Um, if there's anything that anybody has any questions on, I'd be more than happy to address them if I can.
Anyone have specific questions for Cindy?
Besides the new hire, besides new hire, your contracted services, forty-three, two fifty-one, looks like it doubled two and a half times. If you're, if you're hiring somebody new, you still have to have contracted services in mind, but.
Well, those contracted services, it's kind of a comprehensive line item. Um, it wouldn't eliminate the, uh, third-party inspection agency that we have for commercial. A lot of what that was contracted services also include things like, um, standard graphic recordings for any types of hearings that we have. And this year we've had quite a few zoning hearing board meetings. We also have had a, uh, UCC meeting, or I'm sorry, a phone course for the Board of Appeals meeting. Um, that contribute to it that aren't necessarily, uh, typical to any certain year. It depends on how many applications happen for you.
Well, you know, obviously what's coming, because it took such a jump, it made it stand out. Do we get, is that a back charge that we can do to people who apply for zoning variance or for any of those hearings? That, or do we get reimbursed?
We, there is a fee that's charged. Um, that fee is, is adjusted every year. Um, you adopt that, it will be resolution.
Correct.
Um, it's based on compensated wages for city staff and their time that we have involved in it and all the things that we legally, according to the Pennsylvania municipalities, are allowed to pass off to the applicant. There are certain things that we can't, um, we can't pass off the, uh, cost for legal representation for the boards themselves. Uh, we can, we can recoup advertising costs and half of standard graphic reports.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Just quickly. Cindy, I didn't see, which was not say it's not there, but I didn't see, uh, anywhere in the revenue side that, um, projected any possible revenue from the property registry.
That would be a question, Mr. Morris, that would be better geared to Greg, the city manager, as far as the revenues go.
Okay. And the revenue basically would be based on what our estimate is of the number of properties that would appear on that registry. Um, so we just make a note of that as an open question. And kind of related to that, um, I, I'm kind of assuming that the money budgeted for the property maintenance person is a full year salary. But I think it's unlikely, isn't it, that that person would be on board on January the first? So if we were to take an estimate of when it would be likely that that person would be needed and recruited, we could prorate part of that salary, couldn't we?
I, I would assume as much, but again, the city manager takes care of the wages and what's anticipated for that. I, I'd be, I'd be happy to set wages for my department, Richard, but that's frowned upon by the city manager. He would be able to speak to that better than I could. Or your logic makes sense, yes.
Rich, maybe that's something you could email, right?
Yeah, and, and while I think of it, I think the same logic would probably apply to the new plan out. Is it, it's unlikely, Abby, I think that that person would be on board in January the first?
Correct.
Okay. Well, just as, just as a placeholder, there are some potential savings in that budget, just based on the timing of these hires.
Fair enough. Any other questions?
I have none.
But if I may, I always use this time of year to give an update on where the rental inspection program is for the current ward that we're uh, required to have inspections done. So hopefully when the press is watching this later, maybe I'll get some good time on the, uh, Lock Haven Express. We're in the first ward right now for rental inspections that are due. They're due by the thirty-first of December of this year. In the first ward, we've got a total number of property owners of eighty-two, total number of structures is one twenty-seven. Right now, as of today's date, structures inspected is sixty-one, structures not inspected is sixty-six. So we're just shy of fifty percent, which isn't horribly non-typical to this time of the year. Um, it seems to be commonplace anymore for everybody to have a big flurry of activity between Christmas and New Year's. But we have done everything that the ordinance calls for. It's been advertised in the block ad, in the newspaper in April and October, and Donna also sent out notices to the property owners. She even began her vigilance of cracking down phone numbers and emails and making every effort to affect these people between now and the end of December. So any aspirations she has taking off during the Christmas holiday don't seem to be able to come to fruition this year.
Sorry about that.
I'll pass that.
Do you have anything else for us? Anybody else have any questions for Cindy? Thank you very much. Um. Police.
So same with Cindy, I will read through all of our accomplishments, just focus on a couple for the police department. Uh, I think the two biggest ones that we're looking at right now is that, um, the first one on the list that we applied for a grant for just new car cameras. Um, it's the tremendous help from Abby, we got that grant. Um, so we'll be purchasing those cameras here fairly shortly. Uh, and then the other thing is just the transition, uh, with me leaving and Assistant Chief Ricker taking my spots. There's been a lot of training, um, in the past few months with that going on. Um, or next year, um, Assistant Chief Ricker has, uh, several objectives that he would like to accomplish. I'd like to add one on to that is that, um, it's kind of going to flow over that we applied for a grant for new radios, um, with, I hope, again, uh, for every police officer in the county, um, because we're going to, the nine one one side is going to be transitioning additional uh, radios and all radios that we have now are going to be obsolete here in the near future. Um, it's, it's a very big cost, so hopefully we can get that grant. Um, that's gonna, I don't think that's even announced till next year, sometime. Um, as far as the numbers for police, um, a lot of numbers are the same that you're seeing, and that's because the contract with the Lock Haven Police Officers Association hasn't been settled yet, so Greg didn't plug in any numbers because of those. We don't know what's going to be happening, um, with that. If anybody has specific questions, that, that's our, I will try. Um, with parking, um, again, the, the objective, any goals are listed. Um, and, and parking just seems to remain the same most of the time. Um, the biggest accomplishment of this year is that we, uh, the Bureau of Public Health Officers did, uh, calibrate all of the meters in the city, uh, which is required um, every five years. So that is taken care of, uh, this year. Does anybody have any questions? I don't know. One more, I'm going to.
Question, please, Paul. Anyone second? Assistant Chief Ricker, do you have any to say tonight?
She pretty much summarized everything. I mean, there are some, there are some objectives that we discussed and, and one of my, my biggest things is just getting with each of the officers and talking. This objective one is to find out what their interests and their pathways, whatever direction that might lead, and try and find some funding to, uh, to give them this insurance.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. Fire.
Yeah, I guess I'll follow the lead of everyone else and tell you that I'm not going to read all of ours, except that you have a couple that, you know, I would like to point out that we are accomplishments for twenty twenty-two with the training that we held the pump classes, the trench rescue classes. We had the rope rescue training, our annual hazards, the pressure. And we also held it in, participated in the EMR class, helped through the cooperation of Lock Haven EMS. And for our betterment as well, several junior members reached the age of eighteen and have been turned over as official firefighters now, a couple of the, each fire station. So that's a good thing for our manpower operation. I guess one of the biggest things that, um, we accomplished was the fact that we participated with, um, eight companies together and got the SCBA grant from Assistant Firefighter Grant Program, which saved a considerable sum of money for not only us, but the other participating companies and municipalities as well, where we've upgraded our fifteen-year-old SCBAs, or will be, I should say, in the coming year. That's the, one of the, probably the nicest accomplishments, at least for once in the history of the Commonwealth, Pennsylvania, Clint County, a bunch of fire companies got together and done something good for, for the entire community and, you know, got those, got those SCBAs that we, uh, need because our cylinders are coming to the end of their life cycle of fifteen years. So we upgraded those air packs and do us quite a bit of, of good as well. So those are, is some of the things that we accomplished in two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-three, some of our objectives again is, you know, finishing the grant we haven't finished yet. We haven't placed the order for the, for the SCBA, so it'll be coming in sometime in early twenty twenty-three. Oh, one other thing I forgot for twenty twenty-two, I can't believe I forgot to tell Greg this one, but we also participated in the Clinton County, uh, night out program that the Sheriff's Department and the District Attorney's Office helped with the pipe building in, in Lock Haven. It, uh, appeared to be a pretty good success, and I think they're planning on doing it again. And I'm sure we'll be participating in that as well. So if anyone has any questions. Budget is pretty similar to last year with just the minor increases for inflation and whatnot.
Questions for Chief? Do you usually have a question? Not picking up.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. Hard to argue with the statistics and projections. It's hard to anticipate next year as many budgets as I've done, but it's still hard to guess unless you add a flat percentage to something and hope it, hope it hits.
Right, you never know.
Because something's jumped up, but not as much as G. It jumped up, uh, three thousand dollars in fuel in one year. So that's, at least you're looking forward to every category where you're, you're analyzing.
And, and our business has picked up, you know, considerably over the last couple of years, you know, when uh, calls were running for assistance and, and whatever. So it's, uh, costing us money to do that. And again, I, as Cindy said about thanking, I also take this opportunity every year too, while I'm here to thank council for the drivers and the relief drivers, because that it's difficult for to put a monetary value on them. But when you take, for instance, two weeks ago, we just had a kitchen fire up on North Ferry Street. We got there in less than five minutes and had the fire under control before there was any real damage to the house whatsoever, just smoke damage throughout the entire property. But had we not been here and taken us fifteen minutes to get there, there'd have been a considerable difference. It's something that, you know, you can't really figure out how to prove our worth, because nobody wants to sit and what, what will show them, we'll just wait fifteen minutes to go.
Right.
You know, and then we'll see how bad the fire is. But, you know, the relief drivers, it would make a huge difference as well, the aid drivers made a huge difference in our ability to control fires and. The aid drivers made a huge difference in our ability to control fires and, and arrive in a timely fashion.
Well, if somebody waiting there could be able to respond right away and that makes a range difference.
Right.
Thank you for all you do. Any questions for the chief? So the, the second part of this is, I.
Yes. So as part of a recent initiative, I would say, Hand in Hand Company, Hoos Company and Hope Coast Company were led to merge companies. There's a letter of intent in your packet that will be submitted to DCD. DCD has a program that helps with regionalizing fire and emergency services. So this letter of intent basically lets them know what we would like to do and find a best path forward.
So you're just asking DCD to study the merger possibilities and costs and logistics, everything that goes with it. That's, you're just asking for the study to be approved tonight, right?
Tonight, we're just asking for the letter of intent to be submitted, what they choose to do, whether they move forward with a plan of merging.
DCD will do anything with us until you approve our request for a consolidation. So they won't, they won't do anything unless you approve them to come and talk to us and do whatever it takes to proceed forward.
So with this action, we are approving the merger?
We're not approving the merger, we're approving letters. They asked the DCD to study and come back with a recommendation of some kind.
Correct.
About progress or how to proceed.
Yes.
Okay. So it doesn't point us to anything yet.
So we're clear on that. Do I have a motion? So. And a second motion for floor and a second. Any further discussion on, just to comment, I mean, Chief now, obviously this has been discussed by a lot of people for a lot of years. I think it's a great move. I really appreciate you guys taking a step to do that because it's always tough when you have separate entities to take a step like that. So I think it's a good move and really appreciated.
Well, our sole interest was to benefit the Hand in Hand and Hope Coast Company, the fire department, city, the community, everyone. And no one, no one at either company is looking for a hostile takeover of the other. The two of us want to work together to make this merger work and no one that attends any of our meetings on a regular basis had any opposition to this. We took it to the, to the membership first. And we are bound to do what's best for, for the city. And the two companies have, the Hope, the Hope Coast Company has 141 years here. The Hand in Hand Hoos Company has 135 years here. And by participating in this merger, we hope that that'll be in excess of another hundred years that this new company exists. And for the betterment of everyone, you know, that, that is the whole purpose of the, of the merger was for the betterment of the municipality, the community and the hopes and needs. There was no, never any hostile intent by anyone. You know, we, we were trying to look at what was the best for the two and the city as a whole. That's why we decided to approach Greg and go for it and see what happened. And so far, we've been bumbling along fairly well without too many issues. And as I told everyone at our meeting, if, if you want to be the one that supports this, you have plenty of ammunition to support it. And if you also want to be the one that wants to fight it, there's plenty of ammunition to do that. If you want to be the, the fighter that tries to stop it. But I'm hoping that no one does that. I'm hoping that everyone cooperates and we can do this without any knuckle bashing or thing calling or any other inappropriate.
That's really terrific.
Yeah, but we're trying, that's like I said, that's our, was our entire goal, was to do what's best for Lock Haven. I've had relatives at both companies for numerous years, and I don't want to see either one of them drop by the wayside. I want to see them both continue for the better.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion for floor. Off the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri. Yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yeah. All right, comments from residents and attendants. Actually, it's a residence in the city, but you want to make comments. Comments from members of council.
Yeah, there, a quick comment is that, you know, as much as a month ago, we were looking at numbers that were much worse year-end than what we are right now, in spite of fuel and those costs and electricity costs, even. And I am appreciative of city staff and, and city leadership, city manager and the city staff and all the importance that have done their best to keep costs down and get us to these numbers at the end of the year that are, they're not good numbers, but they're better numbers that we anticipate are in range of. So I just want to say thanks to the, to the city staff and, and all, all staff and all levels for helping accomplish that.
Great. Any other comments? We'll move on to FYI. Of course, we have the old Phase One progress.
Yep, this is the progress report from the Phase One, the old dam project. For weeks three and four, the progress meeting was held on November 10th, 2022.
Anyone else have anything to report, council? We will have an executive session following this. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.